Thank you for attending our meeting today. The public will be able to view this meeting over youtube.com/EdgcombeCountyPublicSchools. I was just notified I was one minute late, so I'll try to make up one minute at some point. I was waiting to hear ups and downs for Ms. Ann Kent, who is, we have not gotten her response yet, to make sure that she could be in attendance with us today. It's very difficult to keep all seven of us in line every single day. That's impossible. But we are happy that the majority of us are here. Okay? With the meeting called to order, would you please stand with us in reading our pledge of allegiance?
We are allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. I hope everyone has a copy of our agenda. We'll follow it. Next item on our agenda is the approval of our agenda. As amended, I will have one amendment to add to this agenda. You don't have to have an amendment, okay? All right. So at this time, I need to hear a motion to approve the agenda.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve our agenda as printed. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Thank you very kindly. Dr. Bryant, I would ask you if you could or would share with us a summary of our purpose today and how we got where we are.
Just for the purpose today, the board is certainly getting ready to take public comments today on the electoral redistricting for the board as created by the merger of schools in East Rocky Mount with Escond County Public Schools. Took place on July 1, 2024. Of course, of the past year dating back to at least October 2023, the board has been getting legal updates. Deborah Stagner, our board attorney here tonight, has provided that. The board has taken up that conversation on different occasions, particularly as the merger happened in July of 2024 and then in August. Between October 2023 and probably August of 2024, the board had a lot of community meetings talking about the merger, which included some conversations about the electoral redistricting. And this past year, those meetings picked up in intensity and why should say frequency. Board on August 12 received a board update. September 4, the board, well, not the board, but the board attorney and I had a community meeting at Fairview Elementary School. September 9, there was another legal update from the board at the regional meeting. On October 8, there was another presentation by board attorney Stagner for the ninth of the community in East Rocky Mount. On October 14, the board designated Dr. Edward Wilson to extend representation to the northern part of East Rocky Mount for any parents, community members who had concerns about the poor education for schools. And Mr. John Hoon was extending representation to that area because their current districts encompass those areas and we're the closest to draw to that. And that brings us to today, where board attorney Stagner is going to give us a review of where we are, some information probably a lot of people have heard already regarding the redistricting and help to facilitate the conversation with the board regarding criteria and a possible timeline moving forward. Thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me to do that. It would be helpful to provide that background and context.
Well, we thank you very kindly for sharing those comments because you brought us right up to date where we are with this redistricting issue. Our next item on the agenda is our public comments. And I do have the sheet. The first name on the--
I'm sorry to interrupt. Yes, got a text from Blake and he is not able to hear what's going on. I thought it might be helpful if you could hear him comment as well. Oh, log on, but--
Yeah, be fine. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Train. Okay, our first speaker, Mr. Oka- Wood. Yes, sir. Three minutes.
Oh, okay. I won't need that long. My name is Oka- Wood. I live at 505 Nathan Road in Tarboro. And I really don't have any specific comments in terms of whether you all do nine, eight, seven, whatever. I just want to say that my major concern is that whatever you all decide to do, that the overriding issue is to make sure that those who are joining our system are represented properly. And of course, that could be complicated as I've been told because just because it's nine don't mean necessarily we get proper representation or seven. So that's have to be something that you all work out in your deliberation. I also want to say that I'm very happy that we are here at this point after the demerger. As you all know, I was one of the ones that strongly advocated for the demerger. And it's so good that we are in this situation and that we now have to make sure that those people who did join us are adequately and properly represented. I also got some news today that, and I say because of the merger, but that's one of the aspects of it, that you all did receive a large grant to do some improvement in Edgcombe County. So I want to thank you all for that and your diligence in trying to make this merger work. So again, in summary, just want to make sure that the major focus is beyond making sure those who do join, the students are joining. But now we need to make sure that the public who represent those students are all represented. And thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Hadn't seen you in a very, very long time. I was happy to see you today.
Good to see you.
Okay.
My apologies, Madam Chair.
Mr. Melvin Jazon-Hamid.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, attorney and board members. Melvin Mohammed, 1101 Bradley Avenue. In 2023, community members asked the Edgcombe County Public Schools to postpone this rejoin, but it didn't happen before the election. So here we are. I stand before you, the Edgcombe County Public School, asking that going forward, that there would be transparency and equitable decision-making that would be in the best interest of the students, parents, caregivers and all the citizens of Edgcombe County. Because we all know that the citizens are a major financial sponsor of the school system. We ask that the community help in the process of these great tasks, that citizens be at the table from beginning to end. A good and helpful idea would be the formulation of a citizens' board that can be developed or a certain number of citizens can be appointed to assist the board. We have the time and it's possible. We ask that community meetings be held across the district, especially in Rocky Mount, in the Rocky Mount area. Many Rocky Mount students and citizens will be new to the Edgcombe County Public School system and the way that it function. We ask that you seek their input. It's possible. We ask that the public meeting be held in Rocky Mount and countywide before the development of redrawn maps. Asking for their input. It's possible. We ask that the public meetings be held again countywide to discuss the drafted maps before voting on the redrafted maps. It's possible. We also ask that you allow the community to submit maps for consideration. It's possible. Lastly, we know that some may be motivated to do what is in the best interest of self. But we ask that you beat back those selfish urges and do what would be in the best interest of all. It's possible. We believe that community input is the key. As I have consistently stated, all of this is possible. I ask for many, many meetings. You have the time. You have almost a year. So let's get it right the first time. It's possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Next on the list, Angela R. Bryant.
Dr. Wilson, I'd like to give my three minutes to Chris Shenton, who got here just a few minutes after the sign up, if I may. Can I give my time?
My name is Chris Shenton. I'm a Voting Rights Counsel with the Southern Coalition for Social Justice and I want to thank the time, I think the board for their great afternoon. I'm encouraged by many of the principles that I see laid out here for the board's consideration today. There's a few things I'd like to direct the board's attention to. As an attorney, I handle redistricting matters across the state and across the South, from the county level all the way up to the statewide level. And many of the principles I see here are exactly the ones that we recommend people use. A few things that I'd like to draw your particular attention to. First, I'm encouraged to see that the board is planning to take, to make specific allowance and require itself to avoid diluting the votes of minority voters, particularly black voters throughout the county. I would like to add to that as an addendum. The board has able learned counsel advising it in this process and to make sure that that task is done in accordance with the requirements of the Voting Rights Act of 1965. Have every expectation that the board will do that, but wanted to flag that specifically for your consideration. The second thing that I wanted to add is I'm again encouraged to see that the board is considering but not prioritizing incumbency for many of the reasons that have been stated so far and I expect you'll continue to hear throughout today's public comment period. Incumbency is an important traditional redistricting criteria, but it should not be used to subvert or otherwise minimize the effectiveness of the representation for the county as a whole. And I trust that the board is able to handle that. The last thing that I wanted to direct the board's attention to is again, the timeline that the board is working on here. You have a little bit over a year before the plans need to be finalized for candidate filing in 2026. That gives you plenty of time to get adequate, robust community input and to do it in a way that allows people to express their concerns before a draft map is made, to indicate what they would like to see, what communities they think makes sense to go together, and for the board to take that back with its counsel and with its map drawer to try and incorporate that into a plan that they can then take back to the community and get feedback and input on with respect to specific choices. Having that two rounds of public comment, both pre-draft maps and after draft maps are released, is a redistricting best practice and it helps people feel like their concerns are being heard, their interests are being represented and that their feedback is being considered. So I would strongly urge the board to do that as well and to have two rounds of public comments so that people's concerns cannot just be heard but incorporated into the map drawing process over the next year. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next person on the list, Mrs. O'Ree. Would you like to give-- No, ma'am. Will you just say, "thank you"? Thank you.
Good afternoon, Superintendent, Madam Chair, council members and those present. I'm glad to be here today representing the Rocky Mount area of the Edgcombe County and to express our appreciation for all that you're doing to try to unite us and inform us of the process and the timeline because even though we think 2026 is a long ways away, it may be closer than we think. In doing so, I would like to emphasize the imperativeness of establishing some type of communication between this end of the county, of Edgcombe County and Rocky Mount that end because, you know, coming down 64, that's, you know, it seems like a long way. But we are one and we want to continue to move forward as one. And we need some type of continuous education to-- I know the community members because you may be able to reach out to the parents, you know, through the school system, through the children's portals, but the community at large may need more communication to stay informed going forward so that when things finalize, that the whole community would not, you know, feel surprised because we have worked hard up to this point and we don't want people at the end feeling like, oh, when did they decide A and B? We want them to at least have that communication. I know our human relations department in Rocky Mount will help if you, you know, want to establish some type of extended communication because we have community groups, we have community presidents. And if they receive this information about the school system, this can go deeper into our communities to establish more communication. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person on the list, Dr. Joyce Lane.
Good afternoon, everyone. The board and everyone present. My area of interest today is the northern area of Edgcombe County. The rural northern area, which is often kind of forgotten. We're still out there between Tarboro and Whittaker, right there. Nash and Edgcombe County. And my concern was that these, this area can be included in all the mapping and drawing and the monies, everything that's going on in Edgcombe County. Also, between Heat Leggett and Whittaker, there's a huge space of rural country land we're all aware of and here too, that we're left out there and forgot. But I just wanted to make sure that when we're vetting and making these decisions like about releasing maps, number two, the release of drafts and the voting, developing the plan and considering the release of Edgcombe Public School maps. We think of Edgcombe County. We have three schools out there. We know that our numbers are really low and I heard there's rumor that they could compile that into one school. But my main concern is that we don't be left out, out there in the country. I know there's a lot of country area south of Tarboro, but don't forget us down north of Tarboro. That's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you. That ends our total comment. Thank you all for participating. We'll move to our next item on the agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, I'd like to ask board attorney Stagner to come forward and introduce the presentation and Blake's role as demographer and for review and moving forward.
Thank you, Dr. Bryant, Madam Chair, vice chair, board members. I appreciate being back to see you again. Can we get the light up? Um, can we get the light up?
Ms. Office Chair, please. Hello, Blake. Good afternoon. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. So, as, um, Dr. Brian alluded to, um, I, I have been here to talk to you about this multiple times, um, starting in la, starting last October. Most recently, I was, um, at the Professional Development Center in, in Rocky Mount to, to speak to the public and board members about this process. Um, so what we've put together tonight is really, it's nothing new, it's nothing that you haven't seen before. We've tried to streamline a little bit because, um, we don't want to be too repetitive. This is all information that you've heard before. Um, but tonight is going to be really a focus on your, um, discussion and hopefully some selection of some criteria or give some direction to Blake, who will be our demographer drawing the maps. Um, so I'll talk to you a little bit about those criteria and certainly facilitate and help you through any discussion or questions you might have about, um, choosing those or, or choosing potentially some others. Um, and then talking about a timeline, um, as some members of the public have mentioned, this is a process that you'll need to complete by the time of filing for candidates in Jan, um, sorry, December of 2026. So there is, um, significant amount of time. It's not typically like when we have the redistricting after the census and the, the numbers come out in the summer and you've got to have maps in place by December. So you do have the lecture of time. On the other hand, I understand that there's, um, a desire for some sort of finality of this, so people know what to expect going forward, and there's time for education of voters to, so that they understand, and there's, um, certainly, uh, the board of elections has a role in that, but also you all can have a role in letting people know where their new district is, um, so that when election time does come around, they'll be prepared. Um, we've talked a lot about, uh, over the months, about having a transparent and open process, and certainly, um, all of the meetings at which redistricting is going to be discussed and has been discussed have been meetings that are properly noticed under the Open Meetings Law. All of the discussion is held in open session. This isn't a matter that we take up in closed session, um, you know, unless to the extent that there's some very specific legal advice you need to get, but I am, you know, I'm providing the framework for the, the legal oversight of this, and we're doing that all in, in open session. We are complying with, certainly as you'll see on the slides, um, the, the Constitution of the United States and North Carolina and the, um, Voting Rights Act. But I wanted to just give a little bit of that background. I'm going to turn it over to Blake to go through just some of the background. Again, if there are any members of the public that haven't seen this before, of how we got here population-wise and what the challenge is going forward, and then I'll jump back in and talk about the criteria.
Great. Thank you, Deborah. And again, good afternoon to everyone there. Excuse me. Here we go. So this is, uh, a slide that, as Deborah said, folks will have seen before, but I think it, it is worth representing. So you can see the area that's changing. On the left, we have the former jurisdiction, and on the right, the new jurisdiction. And the area that's changed, the new area that is being brought in, is this purple area here, which may seem small in terms of land area relative to the, the size of the entire county, but the jurisdiction's population is increasing by almost 10,000 people. And since the, uh, jurisdiction's previous population was around 39,000, that means it's an increase of over 25%. So significant, uh, significant change in, in the makeup of the population of, of the jurisdiction. And another way of looking at it is that this area, which I just mentioned, has almost 10,000 people, in this small purple area, that's about the same number of people that are in this entire green area, these seven precincts. So, uh, the, the level of population density is, is significant in the purple area, and as we've mentioned in some of the previous presentations, um, previously, the population of Rocky Mount that was in the jurisdiction was not as significant as the population of Tarboro, but now there's the, the population center in the Tarboro area as well as a population center in the Rocky Mount area. As we've said before, the newly, the newly added population is almost 10,000, but the new ideal district size, which is the entire 49,000-ish, uh, people in the county, that, if you take that and divide that by seven, that's about 7,000. So the, the newly added population is equivalent to almost, um, one and a half districts. So with seven districts to work with, that's going to mean some significant changes, and that's, that's one of the main differences, the reasons, the reason that this redistricting process is significantly different from the one after the census. Um, so usually, what we have, this, uh, bar chart, the, the colors of the bars correspond to the colors of the districts, and typically, when we're doing, uh, a redistricting, some of the districts have populations that are too high above the ideal population, some are too low, and the target, as we'll, we'll explain again in a moment, is to be within plus or minus 5% of the ideal population. But usually, that means taking population from some districts that are too high and, and adding that, so that the ones that are too low can be balanced out. But here, all of the seven districts need to have 1,400 new people, more or less, approximately 1,400 people added to the district. And all of those, almost 10,000 people have to come from this area here. So I'm not saying that we'll take a, a piece from this area and add it to the green district, because, as we'll discuss, the districts need to be contiguous. They need to all be one, one connected piece. But if, if, for example, for the 1,400 people that need to be added to make the population of the green district within the permissible deviation, or basically make it close to the ideal population, let's say we were to take that all from the orange district here, to say this is about 1,400 people here, that means that the orange district not only needs 1,400 new people, it's going to, because it's had 1,400 people taken away, it might need 2,800 new people, and those are going to need to come from areas to the west. So basically, all of the, the districts, um, are going to be, by necessity, going to have to have sort of their, their, uh, their basic areas shift some to the west. Uh, and the extent of that is going to depend on how, how much the board decides to try and keep them like they are, or go for, um, maybe more, more substantial change, uh, more significant change. So as Deborah mentioned earlier, what we're looking for the board to discuss today is the guidelines that we keep in mind as we look to redraw these, and with that said, I will turn it back over to Deborah.
Thank you. So again, this is a compressed version of what you've seen before, the numbers you've all heard before, um, but, you know, it's, it's a complicated, um, sort of more complicated challenge to redistrict than it was in, in 2021, or 2011, or 2001, when I've worked with you all to do this before. It's just going to require more significant shifts. So the board has authority to draw its own districts, um, and that is constrained by other sources of law. The other sources of law are the U.S. Constitution, the North Carolina Constitution, federal law, such as the Voting Rights Act. I also do want to mention that the board is constrained by the number of members it has. You do not have the authority or the power to add new board members. So if, if someone has the question, well, can't we just add two new board members to, to represent the Rocky Mount area? And the answer is no. That would require an act at the General Assembly. This board does not have the authority to do that. So you will have to distribute all of the population of the county to seven, uh, seven districts. The board also doesn't have authority to change the time of its election, and I, I, I think I've heard that before, and I did want to mention it now, that, um, to the extent that, that we're in the process now, a year, a year ahead of the next election, is a factor of the board not being able to, um, sort of time the election or time when this happened. The, the merger, that, that new area of Rocky Mount was added to Edgcombe County Public Schools as of July 1st, 2024, and it wasn't until that moment that you had the authority to redistrict, and of course, your elections had already taken place, um, and the board doesn't have the control over that. So, um, I'll just go through, and I, and these are all criteria on the next two slides that you've seen before in different forms. I've talked about them in all the meetings I've been at, um, but I wanted to, to sort of divide them up in a little bit different way, um, to make it clear that these four items are not, um, they're not things that the board can prioritize or de-emphasize. These are things the board are really, this is the fundamental, this is what, um, we will be building on, what Blake will be building on as he's drawing draft maps. This is the underlying law. To comply with one person, one vote, no district should be more than 5% above or more than 5% below the population of the ideal district size. The ideal district size, as you know, you take the entire population of the county, divide it by seven, and we want to get as close to that as possible, no more than 5% above or below. That's what the courts have said is constitutional to comply with one person, one vote. And again, even though we say, um, one person, one vote, it, because we say that, that's all the people that live there, not just registered voters, not just people with children in the school system, that's everyone that is counted on the census, and we have to use the census numbers from 2020. Those are the only legal reliable numbers that we have in order to redistrict. So even if the population, um, on the, on the ground may have changed, you might say, well, we know there's a new subdivision that went in in this area, so there are more people. Well, we're bound to use the numbers from the census. So that's to explain that. Minority voting strength should not be diluted or over-concentrated. This is a very simplistic phrasing of, um, rules the courts have implemented, Voting Rights Act, and we certainly are going to be cognizant of that and follow that, um, but this is a, this is a way to, to say that we are not, uh, going to, and we do not advise the board to say, well, we want a certain percentage of racial composition in a district. Um, we are going to do redistricting according to mutual principles, keeping in mind that some of the criteria we'll talk about in a minute, but looking at what that, what that, um, reflects, so that we're not intentionally discriminating against or favoring any group based on race or nationality or national origin, et cetera, no, you know, prohibited principles. We also are not looking, although it's not on, on the slide, we're not going to be looking at political affiliation. We don't have any of the Carty affiliation, um, information, so that's not a, a factor that we are going to be looking at when we, um, draw the districts. Districts should not split census blocks. Again, this goes back to the, the fact that we have to use an accurate count, and the smallest area that we can get a confirmed number of people living with, within an area is called a census block. That's sort of the building block that, um, that tracks and other larger, um, larger areas are built on. So that's the smallest area that you can count the number of people, but if you divide it, you don't know how many people are in each side. So we're not going to split census blocks. The, the software that Blake will be using doesn't split census blocks. So there may be an occasion where, um, a school attendance area might not line up exactly with a census block, and that's not something we can really take into account, so we're just going to be looking at those. And then, as, as Blake mentioned, the districts should be contiguous. They should all be within one boundary and not have pieces that are, that are separated by the other district. So these are the required expected guiding criteria that we don't, um, say that this board should approve or not approve. This is sort of built in, is baked into what we're doing. Um, the next slide talks about discretionary criteria, and they, these are things that the board can, uh, say, we want to emphasize this, or we want to make this a lower priority. And as I've mentioned before, um, I, I don't expect that the board is going to go through and say, all right, we're going to number this one through eight, and these are going to be, um, how we want you to apply it. But you might say to Blake, we would like to have one map where, to the extent possible, you prioritize preserving the core of our existing districts. And then we want you to, um, draw a second map for us to consider that's, that takes into, you know, um, puts in higher priority, making the districts more compact. So we'll see two very different maps coming from that, um, and then the board can, um, can make its decision, and you may decide, as I'll talk about in, in a minute, you may decide to scrap both of those and say, no, we, we like to make these tweaks and have you come back with a third option. Certainly, we've got time to do that. So, um, these, some of these guiding criteria that are discretionary are respecting administrative boundaries, and that, uh, those are the boundaries of precincts and municipalities for the most part. There may be other administrative boundaries, but I think those are the ones most people are familiar with and that you'll be, um, most able to, you know, to focus on. Unfortunately, as we've just already heard, the, the amount of, the number of people that are coming from Rocky Mount means that that will take at least, you know, those will have to be put in at least two different districts. So respecting the administrative boundaries of the city of Rocky Mount is not going to be feasible just because of the number of people that are there. But for some of the smaller towns, um, you know, Pineda or Princeville, you may decide that it's important to keep those communities together, not have them split between two separate districts. Tarboro is another one, I think, because of the population, it will probably have to be in more than one district. But that's something that this board might say, you know, it's not our top priority, but we would like you, to the extent possible, to respect administrative boundaries. Don't divide communities of interest, and again, this is, uh, you know, those neighborhoods, those historic, cultural or economic communities that, that you all know and that your people that live in, in Edgcombe County know and are familiar with and can give input on. Blake and I, not living in this area, not knowing this area as intimately, although I spend a lot of time in Edgcombe County, and, and I love it here, it's, you know, I don't know on the ground like you all do. So that's something that we would want input in. It's like, it's really important for a particular community to be kept together, and that's input that will be helpful to us to receive. Following visible features, I, I don't think that that's something that necessarily is something that you, um, might think about here. I do know that in some communities, especially further to the east on the coast, where you have a significant inlet come in, and there's a very clear distinction between the, the north and the south, uh, part of the county, because they've historically been divided by that waterway. But if there's something like that here that is important, that you think that we should keep, um, you know, in mind, then certainly, that's information that we would want to hear. I mentioned preserving the core of, of existing districts. That will be challenging, because as Blake said, everything is going to have to sort of move to the west, uh, to pick up the needed population, but that might be something that you really want to focus on. On the other hand, you might say, that's not as important, we really would like to focus on that compactness of districts and not having these spread out irregular shapes. Incumbency, that's another one. You know, we are going to make some very significant changes, um, and I think in, in a second, we'll pull up a map, and Blake will talk a little bit about, uh, incumbency and how that might pose a challenge, but, um, certainly, there is nothing that requires you to keep incumbency in mind, so that it's not illegal to quote unquote, draw someone out of their district, but it's also not illegal or unwarranted to keep in mind incumbency and say, we want to make sure that, to the extent we can, we keep incumbents in their district. That, that not only benefits board members that are currently in a seat, to the extent they think that's a benefit, uh, but it might also benefit the citizens who you've been representing for years and years, and who know you and who have a relationship with you, might not want necessarily, um, uh, to see you drawn out. not want necessarily to see you drawn out of their district. So, you know, that's something that you all can talk about and think about whether you want to prioritize that or not. You may say that we would like, to the extent possible, you can keep us in our districts, but we want to prioritize these other factors instead. And then two of the lesser, I think, common or maybe less important criteria, although again, I'm not going to put my judgment in it, but these are ones that we don't see as often, is planning for population growth, future growth. If you know that an area is going to have significant new population coming in over the next eight years before the next census, I'm sorry, six years before the next census, you might say, well, let's keep this district a little bit on the lower side, within that 5%, but maybe a little bit lower because we know it will grow. And when we redistrict again in 2031, we don't want to have to have a giant change. And then keeping the number of schools in each district. I've talked about this before, and it is something that might make you or might make the public feel like you have a board member that's representing, you know, every high school has a board member, there's only one high school in a district, and so we can count on that. But as I've heard from you all many times and have seen in practice, the entire board represents all the citizens of Edgcombe County. And so it's not perhaps from a practical matter as important to have a school in a particular district because I think any parent, any citizen can contact any board member and have that issue addressed by putting it to the administration, to the particular, to the right person, or answering that question. So these are some of the discretionary. There may be others that you all think of that are important, you want us to keep in mind, but these are things that we've seen, I've seen, and Blake has over and over and over again as we are doing this over, you know, I've been doing this for more than 20 years now. So I'll go back to Blake to talk a little bit more about the incumbency, and then we can talk about the timeline.
I muted myself, so now I'm back. Excuse me again. And thank you, Deborah. One other piece I just wanted to mention before we go to the next slide, it may be helpful to think back to the 2021 process. And as Deborah mentioned, it's possible to not keep the same priorities for each draft plan, but to have, say, one plan that prioritizes one criterion and one plan that prioritizes another. So that's what we did in 2021. And option A really focused on this one, preserving the core of existing districts. So that was the plan option that really minimized change. And then option C gave much more attention to this one, respecting administrative boundaries. So trying to keep precincts whole and trying to keep municipalities whole. And that involved making a lot more changes. So option A and option C were quite different, and then option B was actually sort of trying to do a compromise. I will say that all of them, for all of those options, we were asked to also avoid the pairing of incumbents. So that's how it was handled in 2021. But that's just an example of how it's possible to kind of weight the criteria differently and come up with different options. So I mentioned incumbency a moment ago. And one other thing, I think in terms of what I consider the really foundational principles when I'm starting to draw new districts is whether this one that Deborah mentioned, whether it's municipalities or precincts, whether trying to keep those intact is being considered. This one, whether it's important to preserve the core or keep change minimized as much as possible, and then also the incumbency question. Those are really fundamental core principles. And again, on incumbents, folks will have seen this slide before, we had a similar slide where the numbers of the districts were placed just sort of in the middle of the district as a label. But here, where the numbers, those purple numbers are placed, actually represents more or less the location of the residence of the incumbent. So as Deborah and I have both talked about, because all of the new population that's being added is on the western edge of the county, the districts are going to need to shift west. But as you can see, a number, four of the seven incumbent residences have a Tarboro mailing address. So there are currently four incumbents that are kind of in the eastern part of the county. And drawing districts to include this new population is going to involve, as I mentioned, shifting areas west. So continuing to include incumbents in these districts will just mean that their districts will have to be shaped such that each one contains one of these numbers. And that's, that's part of the puzzle, and we do it all the time. But because of the magnitude of the change and the fact that it's all on the edge of the county that has not, where we have not had that level of population density in the past, it will represent a challenge. And I'll bring up another example. This was from a different jurisdiction. But if a board member is deciding that they will not be running for reelection, the earlier you can let me know or let us know about that, the better. There was one jurisdiction where Deborah and I worked, where after we had drawn the initial draft maps, we were informed that one of the incumbents was not running for reelection, not planning to try and keep his seat. And had we known that, the draft maps would have been drawn significantly differently. Deborah, do you want to go to the timeline next, or do you want to discuss criteria and talk about the timeline sort of as a separate, or separate later discussion?
I think I'll just briefly go over the timeline, and then certainly, at the board's pleasure, we can talk about these issues and however, however you would like to proceed. This, again, just gives our starting point, July 1st, 2024, and that's the effective date when this board should start looking at the issue and doing something regarding its electoral districts. And again, these are, these are all steps that I think we would recommend. There's no legal requirement for public hearings, for example, although we've recommended, I think it's a good practice. I think this board has indicated its deeply held interest that hearing from the public is a good and important thing. So, you know, this board has done public hearings in the past, and we've held some public information session, public hearing, however you want to phrase it. Receiving community input in the past, the board has done that at regular board meetings and through having an online portal where you can receive comments. Certainly an option to do that again. The board adopts criteria and guiding principles, and this really is just to give Blake a sense of direction and how he should proceed in drawing those maps for you all to consider. In the past, I think you asked for two or three maps to be prepared. That doesn't have to be the same. You could ask for one, you could ask for five, you know, it really is up to you. I think just as a practical matter, it's helpful to have at least two to compare when you first start off, and then you can say, well, we, now that we see it, now that we see what we've told you to do, we really would like to see you address it, and can you show us something that takes this other issue into account more? And so we can come back with another one or two maps doing that. So revising, reviewing and revising the plans. And again, we will present them at public meetings. In the past, you've also made available to the public by having paper maps, very, you know, in large sizes here at the boardroom, the Board of Elections, perhaps other places, and also having an interactive map on the board website so that the public can go in, type in an address, zoom in, and look at the street level, and then give feedback on it. So I know that you all have already started the conversation with the community. To the extent you've already received that feedback, that's great, and I hope you'll share that with us. But as the process goes along, I think sometimes it's helpful to have that map on, you know, sort of on the website that people can actually look at and make criticisms, critiques, suggestions from something that's actual rather than something that's sort of just hypothetical. Ultimately, the board will adopt its plan by having a resolution, and that adopted plan is sent to the Board of Elections. So that end date there is really filing, that last blue square has to happen before filing for the 2026 elections occur, and that will be in December of 2025. So the board would need to adopt its resolution by, I would recommend, November of 2025 or early December, just so that we can get that paperwork completed and sent over to the Board of Elections. So those are sort of the timeframes. You can add more squares into that. You can sort of move things around if you want, but that, those are the steps that we would recommend that be taken and the two sort of bookending dates. The only other thing I would add is that Blake is remote, and he's been at these meetings remotely, and I think he's done an admirable job sort of talking to us, even though we might not always be able to see him. But he will be here in North Carolina in February. So to the extent the board would like to have him come in person for its February meeting, then I think he could make that work. So I'll leave it at that and start by taking any questions or any feedback that the board has, anything you'd like us to cover more. Blake, do you have anything to add right now?
I do. I do.
Okay. Well, I do. While we're on the timeline piece and talking about the, maybe the number of maps, I don't know about the rest of the board, you can express yourselves, but instead of bringing two maps, I'm thinking two options that we may have, I'm thinking three, if that's possible for us to look at. Anybody have any opposition of that, or what do you think?
Madam Chair, I would certainly think that more than one is going to, we're going to need more, at least more than one, so two or three at the least.
And I say, certainly, certainly Blake can do that, and you may want three to start with, to just look at, brush, and I think that means that you will give us three different sort of priorities that you would want with each of those, you know, one different priority with each map. The other option, again, is that he could prepare those two or three maps to start with and then bring them, have time for the community to hear, to hear from the community about them after they've been posted, and then say, all right, we like this part of this map, but we really, you know, we've heard a lot of negatives about this other part of it, can you, can you make some adjustments? And then we can come back with option A1 or A2 or B3 or, you know, whatever, come up with a completely new alternative D that's not anything you've seen before. So just because he brings two or three maps to start with doesn't mean those are the only ones that this board can consider. You can make changes throughout the process.
And you stated that Blake will be in the area, does-
He'll be in Raleigh in-
He'll be in Raleigh.
-February, so he could come to the February board meeting.
Okay.
And so-
Could not. Should not. I think he should. We want to see what he looks like. We want to see his mouth. Any other comments at this point from the board?
So what we really will need for the board before Blake can begin doing any work is to sort of give him some direction, whether you say, we would like to have one map that preserves the existing districts, we'd like to see another map that makes the districts more compact, we'd like to see another map that you draw that doesn't take any account of incumbents, you know, or whatever you choose from those or any other criteria. So, but he's going to need some direction, and that's a decision of the board. So I think on your motion would be an action item to do that. So I can, I can sit down while you all talk about it, or I can stand here and help you answer any questions as you're going through it.
I know Attorney Stagner has stated that legally we have, there are seven districts, and that in order to move from there, it would take an act of the legislation. I have heard tossed around seven and nine districts. What would that process entail, what would it be?
Well, I mean, if this board were to look at a nine-district map, it would sort of be a hypothetical exercise and wouldn't have any effect because you cannot have nine board members unless the General Assembly. So my recommendation is if that's something the board wants to pursue, is to have the board get up with, you know, whether you have a motion or a resolution to seek the assistance of your local legislators, your legislative delegation to put that forward as a local act in the General Assembly. If that is something the board wants to do, given that, and I do not know what the timelines are on that, when or if the General Assembly would take that up, but it may be that you don't want to spend time drawing a seven-district map. If you all feel very strongly it should be nine, and you want to pursue that avenue first, you know, you don't want to, I don't want to waste the board's time and money drawing maps if that's not where your priority is. But on the other hand, you do have to, if that were to fail, you do need new districts in place before December of next year. So, but that's something, I'm not sure drawing different sets of maps is that productive unless you have a sense that you would be successful in getting a legislative change.
Certainly. And I was hoping maybe one of the legislators or more would, might, might would be here. They could go through that with us to tell us what that would entail and what the timeline would, we need to know whether we would waste our time or if we have enough time. They probably need to, I would love, that's me, to love to hear from them as to what that would entail. That certainly ain't possible. That's, I've heard it noise around the board and around the community. So it would certainly be well worth our effort to hear from them, to see exactly what that, because we don't know, to see exactly what that would entail and what we would need to do and if it's possible, really.
I will say that just as an aside, and I don't know if this is something the General Assembly would do, or if that's something that you would be interested in doing, but when the legislation came to, you know, demerger, to move that part of Rocky Mount into Edgcombe County, the General Assembly actually redrew the maps for Nash County, and they took it upon themselves. And whether that's a good thing or a bad thing, I guess depends on your point of view. But certainly, the General Assembly could take away that power of drawing your maps and just tell you what your new maps are going to be if there's local legislation that went forward. So, and that may be something you would desire to be-
The General Assembly can do whatever it wants to do.
Well, that's what the General Assembly does. That's why we are in the demerger right this minute. Now, we've been playing this game 21 years, and the five schools on Edgcombe County's side of the city of Rocky Mount hasn't ever gone without draining the money per student, 1,700 students each year. And when all that took place was in 1991. And when all that took place was in 1991, when the state said that they would only pay for one superintendent per county. That's when all that started. And what Nash County did, Nash County said that they would take all schools in the city limits of Rocky Mountain. That's why they, they were under Nash County's directions from that standpoint, and at that time limit. However, it did not eliminate us from having to send per pupil the funding from Edgcombe to Nash all those years. And that's why it all started. Now, if any Board members feel like two schools, that's what, we have two schools on, on the northern side of the city of Rocky Mountain and two on the east side. And those schools have not gone without one ounce of attention since, especially since July 1, because they became our responsibility, and we've been there for every beckoning moment. Now, we had a meeting in every school after July 1. We put out information, begged people to come. The first school, we had two parents. Second school, we had a few more parents. Third school, a very few parents, four or five, something like that. And that doesn't mean we are not going to do what we are supposed to do and go back. We have inherited a nice center there where we can have our public meetings, and it's right in the center of the, of the four schools that we are addressing. And we are on our plan to schedule meetings far enough in advance, and I promise you, they will not all be in Rocky Mountain because of the merger. What we will do is to make sure that parents and any citizens that live on Edgcombe County's side come to those meetings, participate, and support what we're doing, and understand what the merger period is about. And this little false information about somebody trying to hide something, you're not visible, if you saying that, you are telling, oh, hey, you telling something not right. I started to say what you telling, but I, I didn't want to go there. But I am hoping that everyone in this room will continue to support what we're doing. Because guess what? The first thing in front of our face are the students, the children, that's in the schools. I don't care nothing about what the adults feel, more or less. I'm worried about parents and students getting what they need to get, and that's where our roots are. And nothing, I haven't ever heard one of these Board members say, well, my school not labeled though, I, I don't have no school. No, we are responsible for 19 schools in Edgcombe County, and each Board member feels that way, and I know that, because they will, they have gone, it's going, and that's what we expect. We want the community to support, but come with something other than grapes, bring some, put some lemon in that lemonade, and come and support us, because we're going to do what we need to do. Now, back to Raymond Privet's comment on whether or not we want nine School Board members, 25 School Board members, it doesn't, that's not the thing really, because we don't need nine School Board members. Because either way you split it, doesn't even have to include these seven. We do not need one School Board member per school, because we are not doing that now. Even if, if I was selfish and just said, I'm going to only work with schools that's in my district. No, that's a wrong attitude, but when we come to this table, we're representing the entire county.
My opinion, as far as the nine or whatever, I, I don't see a reason for nine, but there's larger counties than us that, that have seven, and our county commissioners with the same population have seven, and I think we can work on developing a map that will be satisfying to everybody and get the equal representation that everyone needs with seven Board members. I think we may have to, I mean, trial and error, look at some maps and, and work through it. But I don't see a need in adding two more. The more people you add, the more, longer the meetings are going to be.
Yes, right.
Madam Chair, that was, that, that statement was actually made because we were looking at alternatives, and we're looking at things that we can look at that will give us another lens to look at this process through. It's not what we need, because we don't know at this point, but it will give us another alternative, another lens to look at, to say yes, or no, or maybe, or have him to do something else. That, that's why, I'm not saying we need, I don't know, but that's another alternative, another lens, another, that's something else that we can see, rather than to bring out what we have, because we actually don't know.
I think the important thing too is also, this point where we are, making sure we just get the, all the information we need to be able to make a good decision. And I think that's where you, that's what, that's what we, that's what we're looking at. You don't just want to be doing things, do things, but basically like you recommended, the, if something I was saying, if you talk to the legislator, because that's throughout, that's our world. So if we start off in the, on the right foot, we won't have to worry about saying, we should have.
Oh, we should have.
I think, uh-huh, we, we just need to make, be, be clear in what we want and where we headed, because basically, we've never done this before. So if we've never done it before, we're going to have to take the advice, and we're going to have to, all the professionals who can allow, who can give us the information to make the best decision in the amount of time that we have. And, and I think when they were saying, you were saying, we've got good, our timing is pretty, pretty good. I think you said that, based on where we are right now. But getting the right people to talk to us so that we'll know we're making the right decision is going to be very, very, to me, is, is going to be very important.
Yeah, thank you. Any other comments?
My only comment is, when we're looking at the guiding criteria, I am not as familiar with the communities in Rocky Mountain as I probably should be, but that was one I thought would be important as a criteria, is try not to divide communities of interest, neighborhoods, or other historical, cultural, economic communities, because by not being as familiar with them, I wouldn't want to break up an area that may have similar interests. When you were looking, you know, you were mentioning the criteria.
And I'll just address that, and that's, again, something that, you know, you can say that this is a priority, not to divide communities, but, but we will need to have very more specific information from, potentially from community members about what those communities are. And in order to be effective so that Blake can draw maps to incorporate that, would need sort of to say, you know, set a date, we will accept, you know, recommendations about the maps until X date, after that, we're going to be drawing maps and then bring them to you to look at. So certainly that can be a step that's added in, you know, we just have to make sure that then we plan everything out and, and so that we leave ourselves enough time, if you, if that makes sense.
Yes.
The other thing that I didn't mention that I want, didn't want to forget is that it's been brought up several times over the months that I've been talking to you from public, you know, public comment, is that, well, we want to be able to, you know, communities' members want to be able to provide maps, and certainly I think that's something that Blake and I would be willing to look at, it's just going to, they're going to have to be presented in a way that he can, you know, he can look at and he can get the numbers and the population numbers and the boundaries. So if you should get an inquiry like that, or perhaps Blake can give some guidance to your IT people about how to accept that, or, you know, we can facilitate some way. I think it can be done, it may just be, I'm not a tech savvy person, so we'll just have to talk about how the logistics of that would work, but certainly if the Board wants to accept maps to consider, or to accept a map just to provide background information, then that's a feasible alternative.
Okay. Any comments now from the Board members? Have we heard it from you, Ms. Stewart? You have any comments? Do you like that?
I'm just going along with the consensus of the Board.
Okay. Thank you, Stuart. Okay. So I would say, from what I'm hearing, as far as consensus, that we would at least expect three maps from, rather than two, rather than two.
And so, Madam Chair, we would need some guidance, yeah.
Right. Go ahead.
I do have a question, a concern. When you say the, keeping the areas, like in the Rocky Mountain area, the, the municipalities, the communities, if we can get some information from the people in the area concerning the preservation of those communities that they would like to see remain together, that's what Anne has spoken of, and that's what I was thinking, that maybe someone in the community can provide that for us.
Well, certainly, so I'm just going to throw out a hypothetical to give you all something to throw, latch on to. Perhaps tonight, so that we can at least get the ball rolling, then, then the Board could say, all right, we would like Blake to come up with one alternative map that sort of tries to preserve the existing districts to the extent possible. We would like to have Blake come up with a second map that focuses more on having those districts compact. And then we would like Blake to come up with a third map that respects administrative boundaries, and in order to, to start that map, we will have a place on the website, or someone can come and bring it in person, or mail it, or email it, but we will have some mechanisms for the community to provide input up through January 1, or January 5, or whatever, you know, date you decide, and then at that point, Blake can start the third map. And then, perhaps in February, Blake could come and show the Board all three of those maps. Then those maps could be put on this district website, blown up and put in the central office and the community center, wherever you want them. You would have another period of input, and then maybe have another, you know, open comment, public hearing, to, to get public input on those three alternatives. And then the Board could, you know, at that meeting or at a subsequent meeting, talk and decide, we want to move in this direction, we want to move in this direction. You know, I think that that's sort of a, a logical way to go, but that's just a hypothetical so you could see, and I would expect that that process could take up through, you know, March or April. And then, you know, at that point, the Board's got to, you know, start getting kind of serious about what it wants to do.
Well, on my way. Got to make decisions.
If there was a consensus and the Board wanted, or maybe just explore talking with the legislative delegation to see what kind of feasibility it is, you could do that on a parallel path. It might mean that those maps with seven districts aren't what you end up using, but you would have that information that you, that you want. Again, you know, nine, it's a significant change for this Board, you, you've had seven for as long as I can remember, and, you know, that's a different dynamic. As, as I think one of the Board members said, there are much larger districts that, that have seven or fewer Board members, but that's, you know, that's a priority that you all need to, need to address. It's not really, you know, a legal issue that I'm going to give you advice on, other than you would need to start taking those steps if that's really what you're serious about, about doing. So I'm going to, I'm going to stop talking now, like you all. Tell us, tell us how you want us to proceed. Do you want me to sit down while you all talk, or do you want me to stay up here with my seat?
You can take a seat. You've talked a lot tonight, and we appreciate that, and we need it to hear from you.
Happy to come back up here, or just holler out from my seat.
All right. Thank you so much, we appreciate both you and Blake, oh, I need to sit down, Blake, for what you said. Now, for her to take back, wouldn't we need to have a vote to stipulate those three concerns that she shared with us, so she would know that this is what we're asking them to get ready and bring back, what we are thinking? Because if we do fix a motion so we can, so she'll know definitely that's what we want to do.
We need a vote, or just consensus from the Board, and if they think about other things other than what Ms. Stagner said, that they wanted to look at, and to develop a map.
Well, it could be like a starting point, because she said we can change it too, so after we get, we could start with what she said, and then take community comments and whatever from the website and changing them as needed, if we want to.
So I didn't mean to give the impression that those are the only three options.
No, we, we understand, and we know that that's not.
The only other thing I would add, add, Madam Chair, is that it's important for Blake to know whether he needs to keep the incumbent residences in mind, and it could be that he does one map with and one map without, but he needs direction on that, because as you can see, that could really be important if, if you want to keep those incumbents in mind, he's going to need to have that on his map as he starts drawing. So we can get guidance on that as well.
I do believe we need one with incumbency in mind as to where they are, and then we'll take it from there. Now, give us those three things again, if you will.
So that everyone can hear me, I'll just come back up here. So, so one option would be, and again, I think the, these are sort of the, the bigger, bigger picture ones, but preserving the core of existing districts. So if you all think it's important to the extent possible, and as we've shown you the maps, it's going to be a real challenge to keep the maps looking like they do now, but to, to start with those districts and make the movements from what you have and keep them as much as possible, that would be one, preserving the core of existing districts. So that's the fourth bullet point, I think. Making the districts reasonably compact, which is the fifth bullet point. So not focusing so much on the districts as they are, but keeping the districts so that they're not all sprawling all over the place. You might have a district that has to go, you know, from east to west across the middle of the county to, to keep, to start and keep that incumbent in the same seat. So maybe the Board wants to look at one that keeps the districts more compact, but doesn't look at incumbencies, because I think that would be more challenging. So if you want to have one with and one without- So, if you want to have one with and one without, you know, that would be an option. And then the third option, which I've heard people talking about, is respecting communities of interest, so the second bullet point there. And that would be potentially, you would open a window to get feedback from the community for a month, say the beginning of some time in January. I want to leave Blake enough time to draw, draw the maps with that in mind, but, and then, you know, bring those three alternatives into the board in February. Leave them on the table, so to speak. We would present them in February and then leave them out there for public comment, post them on the website, put large maps up, and then maybe in March, or at the March meeting, or in a, at the March meeting, or in a public hearing, a special meeting, a work session, you could have some feedback on those concrete examples of what the maps would look like. And then you could direct us to make changes and come back with a different alternative in April or May. So, again, we're starting, this is what the timeline is going to start, start looking like, it's going to start becoming real obvious, you know, what direction you're going to want to move in. So, is that helpful, Raymond Privet?
Yes, absolutely. So, let me be clear though, the present, the present structure, adding in the 1,400 people that each one of us need, each person needs to have, we're going to see that. That's one, right?
Well, that's going to be all, all three will be based on seven members. I think, you know, the board is going to have a decision to make. Do you want to, at the same time that we're moving down this process of drawing maps with seven members, do you want to explore and talk to your legislative delegation about, about the adding, adding board members, or do you want to put this all on hold until you get that question answered?
Well, that's going to be us. That's, we'd need that information. We need to hear from them and get that information. We don't even know if...
They can give you a timeline, they could also...
Yeah, we can call a special work session for that, to bring them in, because that worked for us.
That would determine whether we keep, whether we go that direction or not.
We do need to hear from them, at Edchcombe.
Okay.
But we can be working still.
I think that's the question that we're on the edge of our seats about, is do you want us to start drawing maps for seven districts while you explore this other, you know, issue?
Yes, yes, absolutely. Yeah, we don't want to start. And we can come back and say, "We like what we heard, and that's the direction we're taking," or not. I don't want us to get to the 26th, November, December 25th, and say, "We wish we had..." Look, we can't go back from there.
Oh, absolutely.
These are initial steps, too.
Take care of business as we move on this.
If you do it intentionally, and bring in all the information, you can make a better decision about what we're, what we're trying to do, and this sort of thing.
And certainly, you know, once you all see some maps in February, you may feel very comfortable that, that, you know, this is the path you want to continue on with seven members.
So, you are clear.
I'm going to ask if Blake is clear. I keep hearing consensus, consensus, is he listening?
I've been listening to every word.
Okay, good.
I think that that gives me the, the information I need to start moving forward.
All right.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Well, my pleasure. I look forward to working with you all again. I apologize, I've got a little sore throat happening, a little scratch.
Okay, we have, not right, you have the confirmation right there.
Ms. Stagner, do you need that in a letter from the board?
Well, what if I phrase, well, my understanding is how the board wants to, and then you can accept that as a motion, that way there's no question. I think I would agree with that. So, the board, the motion would be that Blake and I present the board with three maps in its February meeting, that one map would prioritize the current four districts with incumbency, and that the second map would prioritize, pull up the, would prioritize compactness of the districts and would disregard incumbency. And the third would prioritize not dividing communities of interest, and that the board would accept through the, through the superintendent's office, he will set up on the website and provide an email or a point of contact to submit recommendations and suggestions and ideas about what those communities ought to be. And that is not, I would just add, that's not limited to Rocky Mountain, that's for any part of the county.
Right, absolutely.
And that on, on February 3rd, those will be presented to the board for discussion and review, they'll be presented, they'll then, after the board meeting, be placed on the website and other places that the community can provide input. But the motion would be to present those three maps with the criteria I just listed to be brought back at the February meeting.
Deborah, there's one little detail there. February 3rd, I will not be available, I will need, I have a commitment in Raleigh on the 3rd, but the second Monday in February, which I believe is, is the 10th, is, I would, I would be available and would be thrilled to be able to meet with the board in person.
The board's regular meeting is...
That's our regular meeting, it's the second Monday.
Yes, the regular meeting is the second Monday, Blake.
You, is that clear? You've made the motion, and so, Madam Chair, has been moved and properly seconded, that we will approve the three drawings of the maps for us on, and be presented to us on February 10th at our regular board meeting. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Oppose, the same sign. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you for your presentation and time with us. I need to hear motion for a chairman, so, Madam Chair, has been moved and properly seconded, that we will adjourn our November 25th, 24th meeting. All in favor of the motion, let it be known by...